I call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. And I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And for scheduled business, since we do have someone in the audience, we will jump ahead to allow him to go home. So we are jumping to item C, Commercial Trash Hauling Permit Renewal.
Yes.
And I take it you would like to speak to that?
Yeah, I'd like to renew. I know I moved to Kingston.
All right. I do not recall, or I seem to recall, that there was nothing put in that required it to be a Newton resident.
No, actually, we-
Specifically made sure that was not in there.
We actually, we had that and we removed it.
That's what I thought. So as long as it is still meeting strictly Newton residents and all of the criteria set forth in the policy, then as a current permit holder, there's been no complaints, which means I see no reason not to renew.
So I just want to, in the interest of transparency, and you know, just what Lisa's talking about there, nothing in the policy that we wrote said anything about Newton residency. But you recently moved to Kingston, right?
Yep.
So at least you're still in the same region as far as our school taxes.
That's right.
And fact of the matter is, correct me if I'm wrong, Kingston people can use our dump, but it's a pay-as-you-go dump, transfer station, but it's a pay-as-you-go deal, right?
For bulk items, yes.
For bulk items. So, you know, I don't have an issue with it. I think everything has been working well. I haven't heard any issues with what you proposed, what we kind of wrote up, and what you did. I'm just, I keep waiting for the person to stop me on the street and say, hey, that guy doesn't even live in Newton, and you're allowing him to do this. I haven't heard that yet. But I guarantee somebody's going to say that to me at some point. So I just, you know, in the interest of transparency, I just want to get it out there. I don't have an issue with it. If we had 10 people in front of us, and you know, none of them lived in town, I might start having an issue with it. But we only had one. We put this out to bid essentially, a proposal.
The policy actually calls for us to have a lottery.
Yeah.
However, when there's only one person applying-
And the policy also states that previous permit holders will be given preference.
Right.
So either way, you're looking good. Now, of course, there is a permit fee.
Yes.
Which you are required to pay within 10 working days after the lottery. So two weeks from today, basically.
That's fine.
Other than that, I've heard nothing but good things about the service.
Great.
So I-
I will move to issue... Sorry, Steve, your last name, literally, Steve Seer.
Saint Seer, yep.
Right.
It's a tricky one.
What is your business name?
The Newton Waste Company.
Newton Waste Company, a permit for the 2020 fiscal year.
Do I have a second on that?
Second for discussion. Is it really a fiscal year? Isn't it calendar?
Calendar year.
It's a calendar year. Well, it's both. It's just our fiscal year happens to be January 27.
The calendar, yeah.
But it is one and the same.
Cool.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Just see the clerk on your way out. No.
Have your check off.
Yeah. I'll empty the trash on my way out. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The fee, by the way, this is all in the policy. The fee is $500.
Yep, and it's right in the policy.
Yep.
Okay. Good to see everybody.
You too. See you soon.
See ya. All right. And again, in the interest of attending the people who are in the audience first, we will move to item B, the 2020 Proposed Budgets. And we will go with Town Clerk, Elections, Registrations, and Vital Statistics. Uh-oh. It's one of those days.
Oh, wait, look, look. It might die.
Move the electronics.
There might be some in her closet.
It's one of those days.
She's putting some paper towels.
Sorry, guys.
Where's the trash people going?
We're going to get somebody to balance the floors.
Hey, empty.
This is not what I wanted to happen to my coffee.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break here. That was all broadcast live. Plug it in. You can plug it in and still record, right?
I can't top that, Lisa.
So, in the interest of time. So I have to ask this every meeting because this spreadsheet is backwards from the rest of the world. So is your budget under by $10,000 this year?
At the moment, it is.
In comparison to last year's?
Yes.
That's a good thing.
Well, yes.
I'm assuming we're doing election-
Correct. Election is our first one.
This is my budget.
What are we doing the first one?
I'll answer whatever questions you might have.
All right, why am I not finding-
We're doing it four times this year?
We have four elections, yes. And now that we have two machines, that means we have four cards to program, so that doubles pretty much the cost of things.
But it's, but you're, what you're proposing is under last year's?
No. No, it's more.
No.
All right. So it's more. So that means more in that column.
It is.
It means less than under. No parentheses mean-
See, this column isn't parentheses because it is under what was budgeted, so they haven't quite spent it.
Can we, the spreadsheet, is that a possibility?
But this actually is correct accounting.
Yeah, that's correct. This is the accounting.
And then this one is the difference between this and this. So the difference between this and this is negative. The difference between this and this is positive.
When I see the parentheses-
Even I understand that.
Yes.
That means we're running under.
Right.
Accounting-wise?
Correct. And we are going, that 50 means we're going under what was budgeted last year. So what's in parentheses, $50, is under because it was $150 in 2019. It's $100 proposed for 2020, which means it's gone down, or it's less.
In that column.
Anyway.
Anyways. So it's like asking for a little more for phone.
And that's because the other machine, right?
More for training.
Well, that's because I cut it last year. I kind of look at what I spend year to year, and if I think it can go lower, I'll go lower. I have no idea why the phone is more expensive this year.
But since your year-to-date expense on phone has exceeded the budget by almost $100, it's safe to assume that it'll probably cost as much next year.
Yep.
So that increase is understandable.
I mean, I would move to accept the Election, Registrations, and Vital Statistics Proposed Budget for 2020 and add it to the full proposed budget.
I second the motion.
All right. So seconded by Kate. Just one question. I know we have more ballots, voting, et cetera. Because don't we have a November and a March next year?
We have the Jan, well, the February primary. We have March. We have the September state primary. And then we have the November general election.
So have we budgeted enough for the extra voting?
Ballots, I don't pay for the ballot. The state ballots, I don't pay for. That comes directly from the state. They send that. The town ballots come out of a different... The town ballots should be okay because it's only one... It's the same.
Right, one day for us.
One day. The other things, as far as salaries, I try to figure out to be in compliance with what the state wants us to do. An average of 10 workers, that includes supervisors of the checklist. 15 hours a day at whatever they make, 10 hours times four elections, plus a little extra. And then the other expenses, and that Kim had pointed out to me, is that we have three more elections to feed people with. So she had suggested that higher cost in the, wherever it is there. It's on this side. Salary, like the other expenses, I think it was.
Vital records charges?
Supplies. It was once, the election supplies. That's where that increase come from.
I don't see an election supply.
Page one on the bottom of the first.
Supplies, election.
Supplies, election, was $1,000. And she said we should bump that up another thousand.
The last one on the first page.
All right. My page doesn't have... Oh, the one before it. There we go.
I know, it's the snow. I'll give that to you.
I know you're taking other expenses from $3,000 to $500.
Wow, what happened there?
Oh, I think because we moved it and put it somewhere else. We moved it to another line item. Let me think where Kim put it. Because there was something in there that we were paying the other expenses. It came out of the-
AccuVote?
Something to do with IT consultants and clerk works.
Oh, okay.
Up the top. I didn't have that in that line item because the clerk works is new. So any of the, anything from that was coming out of other expenses. We took $2,000 and threw it up there.
And you mentioned we now have another voting machine.
We have a backup.
Okay. Is that a purchase, or is that a-
Oh, we bought that two years ago. We bought that after the first snow election that we had, when it jammed.
Oh, yeah.
And then later on that year, LHS had contacted me and said that they had a few machines that were brand-new, never used. And they were selling them for like 50% off. I'm like, me?
That's great.
So we got one, in case that ever happens again.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now we will move on to the tax collector.
So you're proposing lowering that budget by $400?
Yep.
Much simpler budget to look at.
Isn't it? Isn't it? It's like cut and dry. This is what it is.
I'm glad to see an increase in training. I always support training.
Oh, that's because I'm going back to my conferences this year. I've skipped conferences for both departments for four years now, so... I will be owing.
I will make include the draft tax collector budget as proposed in the town draft budget.
Seconded by Matt. Any discussion, questions, comments? All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Drive safely.
Yes. Walk safely.
All right. So in, just to keep us on a track, I'm going to continue with the proposed budgets.
Okay.
So we will move to the next one, which is under Financial Administration, Town Hall, and Fire Chief. Quote and lease to upgrade Windows 7 PCs?
So in the red folder.
So that's... Is that to increase the current budgets by the amounts required by the quote and lease?
Yes, I believe so.
Yep. And is that in our binders, the changes?
In the red one?
No. Is it in the binders?
It should be, yes.
Okay.
Well, what are you asking about the-
Okay. Under 2020 Proposed Budgets, we have Financial Administration, Town Hall and Fire Chief, Quote and Lease to Upgrade Windows 7 PCs.
So the quotes are in the red folder that you have in hand.
Right. But are the dollar amounts included in the budgets?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was asking.
Sorry.
And same thing for the Police Department. So, because we've already approved those budgets for inclusion, correct?
Not yet.
Police Department, no.
No.
Nope. So we haven't included them yet?
Police and Fire is next meeting, I think.
Okay. So wait. Okay. So we have the proposals.
Yes.
And if we look under-
IT.
IT. Under General Government?
No, Financial Administration.
Financial Administration.
We'll be going to that.
Contracted Services, the increase of $13,000 is for the Quote and Lease?
Correct. Well, the, yes. The lease, the quote is put, you know, they're paying, and then the lease is paying it three times a year. Not three times, once a year.
Okay. So the $13,000 is to cover the upgrade, the Windows 7 PCs for Town Hall, Fire Chief, and Police Department?
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So that's justification for the $13,000 increase. Just wanted to make sure I'm following-
So it's not in their budget?
No, this always comes out of the Financial Administration budget.
But it covers all three, right? Police, Town, and Fire?
Yes.
Which is why it's high.
Okay.
Makes sense.
And that number will-
And the reason we are upgrading these Windows 7 PCs is because Microsoft is no longer supporting Windows 7. So if these machines break down, you know, blue screen of death or anything else, we will get no assistance from Microsoft whatsoever.
It's not only that, but if there's any kind of hacking done, they may not fix it. So you could be open to more... The security risk is more what you're looking at.
Right. Because they're no longer putting patches or anything else on the Windows 7 either.
That's correct.
Didn't we, I believe we did, the board approved the agreement last year for the lease agreement?
Yep.
But then we found out that we were too late, and the prices had changed, so we couldn't do it this year. So we're making sure we get it in for this year, or for next year, rather.
Avatar software? So it's a lump sum payment, probably, right?
Yeah. We have the three softwares, Tax Collector Building and Assessing. So that's for them to maintain and-
Support.
Support, yeah.
You know, my next question is, what is the level of usage?
That gets used every day.
Yeah.
Every day?
Yeah.
So all those three departments are using Avatar every day?
There are different programs. Three different programs that you're using.
Yep.
So the, I'll use the building one.
Yep.
And how Mary Jo uses all the tax stuff.
Sure, yeah.
And the building clerk does enter the permits. Code enforcement also enters in?
I was under the impression that wasn't happening at some point.
Well, it is being done.
That has become more frequent this year?
And more detailed.
I would like to make sure it gets the usage we're paying for, you know? Because that's nine grand. So it sounds like other departments, it's part of the way they do business. It sounds like another department we need to improve.
And when our residents go to look up properties in Newton, they go to our, the link, that's using Avatar.
Yep.
Because that's where all that did it.
And that's all.
So it's not even just internal use, but anyone who wants to, like, I go look up my property, I can look at my tax card and-
Sure, but I want to make sure we're doing our thing.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, we're improving the way we do that.
And it looks like we overspent on the Town website?
$21.25 versus $2,400 spent? Yep. So it's $275 over.
So something, more than likely, something went up before we had the budget last year.
Or after we budgeted.
Because we're talking about basically hosting, and it's template-driven, right? So it's not like we're hiring somebody to do development work, right?
Yeah. It's basically hosting. We, they did develop the initial site for us, but all maintenance is on the pages is done by us.
I believe their prices went up a little bit for next year, too.
That also is the video on demand, you know? When you click on the quote of the links for the video, that's part of that, too.
I'm sure whoever we're using as a host is similar to mine, where if people start actually using the videos, looking at the videos a lot, they actually start to charge you a little bit extra for bandwidth usage.
You have a website?
No, they shouldn't.
For your business?
Yes.
Oh, wow, cool. I'll have to check it out.
Mine is $45 a month.
Ask me when it's back up.
Yeah, right, right.
I got half.
They, it's a set fee. $500 for the video on demand, and then what else?
Yeah, I would think it'd be set. I think the, kind of the old way of contracting, which some hosts might still be in the business of, like, because mine is, mine is a set fee for the year. You know? If somebody hit it 10,000 times a day, it'd still be the same price.
Oh, okay.
Mine, too.
What else might be included in there is paying for the domain name?
Yeah.
Yeah. Goes up occasionally.
Yeah, because that's usually one year, two year, three year, something like that.
Something like that.
And you have to do the renewal. Payroll services has gone down?
We signed an agreement with them to get a cost-effective price. Kim did her homework and came up with a lower price, and so we went with it.
Excellent. All right. Jim, you were going to say something?
I'll move to include the Financial Administration draft budget in the Town draft budget.
Check it.
Seconded by Matt. Any further questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Our next item.
Well, you know, before you go off that, let's see. There's those two things, the quotes.
Yes.
Okay. If we can get those in the promotion to sign those. There's a lease agreement in there? It's all attached, I think, right?
Yes. So we have-
Oh, here is the row ones here, too.
So we need a motion for the chair to sign the two quotes.
And there's a lease agreement in there as well? Well, it's not, I wouldn't say it's a, no, it's in that whole packet that you had there. It should be.
Yep. That's a different item there.
Move to have the chair sign the quotes or the leases for the upgrade to Windows 10 systems.
Check it.
Proposal, yeah.
All right. Seconded by Matt. Any questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right.
Good, thank you. And that's for the PD and the Town Hall and the Fire Chief, right?
Right. Yeah.
Good, thank you.
It's all in one quote, apparently.
No, there's two quotes in there.
There's only one signature page.
Oh, yeah. The other one, I just leave in the email. Just send them an email. I guess it needs to be done, so. Moving on, moving right along.
All right. Moving along. We have Fire Department.
I think that's next week.
We did, yeah, I was going to say-
They're not doing it, they're not here.
The two big ones are at the end.
Yeah. So we'll skip over that one. We're not doing that one today.
Yep.
General Government Building?
Notice a reduction in the maintenance of, between the two of them, $4,500.
Where, Jim, which one?
Core grounds maintenance, summer and winter?
We sold two Amesbury Roads, so we took that out.
Okay.
That's right.
I think that was the difference, right?
Where do we have chemical toilets?
I understand that being the summer difference, the winter-
The chemical toilets still-
Where is that?
Down, or is it?
Oh, I shan't want to help one.
Where are the chemical toilets?
Yeah. Because if we're paying for it.
Oh, okay. Makes sense.
Actually, that's a-
No, not at Transfer.
No, that's, sorry.
Greenie and the Beach.
And-
Ah, okay.
Matt asked a good question. The porta potty is no longer at Transfer Station, correct? We are, we're using the chemical-
Right.
Okay.
But we've changed companies. And again, Kim worked with them and got a real good price. And we also don't get the porta potties at the beach and Greenie until like April or May, when we know we're going to start using them. And we have them taken out in September and October, based on which one is being used.
Sounds good.
So to hearken back to a previous conversation, line item improvements would be described as what?
That's your catch-all for fixing buildings, or windows, or floors, or whatever.
Okay. Line item repairs would be?
Repairs. It would be anything that needs repairs. And that covers all buildings. So if the library comes to us and says we've got a couple of broken windows, it comes out of the repair line.
So I saw you sent out an email to all the department heads. You said, "Do you have anything that needs to be repaired, whatever?"
Yep.
So their response to that sets your budget, yes or no?
Right now, I'm collecting whatever data that they're giving me, and then that's going to be left up to the board to decide what you feel is priority-wise, if you need to increase the budget.
But, so I guess where I'm going with that is, is the management of this, like I said last time, is if we're going to expect the departments to manage their own repairs and improvements, then we should allow them to have a line item for repairs and improvements, and they can manage it in such a way, so if they, I think the example I used last time, if they, if they want to spend it on bulletproof vests instead of fixing a roof, then they can do so. I think, I just don't think it's consistent for us to have a catch-all department, or a catch-all budget item, to capture all this, all these repairs and improvements on our town buildings, and then have the department heads managing their repairs and improvements on the town buildings. I think that's a question for the board. Am I the only one who thinks that's inconsistent?
What do you propose?
Like, first of all is, I don't, I'm not in favor of adding a new job for somebody. I don't think we need a director of buildings. But I think if we're, if I'm the fire chief and my toilet doesn't work, the last thing I should be worried about is finding somebody to fix the toilet, and then, you know, how much is it going to cost? Can I get Nancy's approval or the board's approval to pay this? I think it should be one or the other. So either they keep it in their budget and they handle it, and they, you know, they keep us up to date if, if they need to, but they manage their building, because that's the building they live in, or we manage their building. And when I say "we," we have an administration staff in the town hall that could have a rolodex of, this is the plumber we call, you know? When I was a, when I was a landlord, I had a plumber I called all the time, so much so I was in like a club pricing type thing, so I saved money every time I called them, because I called the specific one. We would have that advantage, stuff like that, so. But that's just me. If the board's not, doesn't care, then we can move on, otherwise.
I think we should think about it.
I can say that in the past, every budget used to have their own repair line, and...
I remember that, yeah.
I remember boards saying that it should all be general government. It's our buildings, it's not really their building.
Exactly.
Their budget is to run their department, not do repairs to their building, and...
Exactly, so if we bring in the budget, because I agree with everything you just said, I was on the board when we did that, what I was mistaken, and I, turns out, I found out last week, is I thought when we took the money, we took the responsibility off their hands. Granted, we're the landlords, is what it comes down to. They're the tenants. You'll get a, if you're a landlord, the tenant will call you and say, "Hey, there's a leak in the roof, can you take care of it?" And you're the landlord, take care of it. That's my point.
The biggest problem I see is we really don't have the manpower for one person in town hall to manage the repairs, necessary repairs, improvements, custodial, cleaning, shoveling, et cetera.
Yeah.
We don't have that manpower for the budget.
You sure?
Yes, I'm sure. Don't have it.
Have we looked at...
Well, do you recall the police chief basically was not against doing it? It sounds like we need better lines of communication between everyone, so people don't feel they have to wait to get their sink fixed.
Yeah, I mean, if...
That was an issue.
If that's what you're saying, if the department heads don't care, then we can move on, but I just think it's over.
Chief Jewett was like, he didn't want to put more on you at the same time, so...
I have a lot of department heads that come to me and ask me. I, I was told that we had an issue in the rental, and I contacted the plumber to get down there and take care of it. So we are dealing with things that we know about. We can't deal with things we don't know anything about.
We could send a memo.
If the fire chief needs repairs, it's hard for us, it's easier for him. He knows what he's talking about. They have to be there to meet with the plumber.
But all he needs is direction. He needs the direction to say, if you have, if you need help, this is who you call.
Right, well, we can put out a memo to everybody.
Exactly.
And make sure we have a policy of an order of how they do it, so they feel it's clear for everyone.
It sounds like we want to maintain what we're doing now. I don't know.
With better communication.
And the other reason for keeping it under general government and not under each department heads, in my opinion, is it's a line item for improvements and repairs to town buildings, town properties.
And I agree with that.
And if it was in under the different departments, then, like you said...
Less flexibility.
Right. They may opt not to repair the roof in order to purchase the bulletproof vest, for example, and then...
The roof leaks.
Snow, roof leaks, and we're stuck repairing the roof anyways.
Yeah, you're preaching to the choir with that aspect. I think, I think where, maybe I'm the only one in just...
Honestly, I think it is time, as people will recall, every time we do the lawns budget, I'm big on, gee, for the price of what we're spending, we could be doing it with our own employee, our own equipment, and probably less money. I think it is time for us to actually consider whether or not we should have a...
Grounds maintenance.
Exactly. A maintenance person in town who does the lawns, who does shoveling.
Not grounds maintenance, but property maintenance.
Like a superintendent.
Property maintenance, because it would be more than grounds.
Oh, yeah, it would be, because the...
The minor repairs.
The grounds do not take a forty-hour week every week.
Correct.
So somebody who could actually come in and, yeah, the library has a window, that the glass is broken, needs to be replaced, okay, prioritizes the repairs, and comes to us when there are things that need to be, go out for bid.
And ACs that need to be put in or taken out, and shoveling, and...
Exactly.
Painting, or patching, or, you know, all the things that are involved in property maintenance.
Right, and I personally think that within the parameters of this budget, there is more than ample, I mean, it's two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand, you know? Even if we allocate that the position is, yes, it's going to pay between forty-five and fifty-five thousand, that's still, actually, that's lower than, that's barely more than the summer grounds.
Yeah, because summer and winter is forty-seven-five.
Right.
And that's actually going down for proposal.
Right.
But that would not include the purchase of all the different lawn equipment that you would need.
And that's my rebuttal every time this comes up, is we don't, we don't own snowplows, we don't own, the drivers are contracted out, that's because there's flexibility.
The snow plowing is also part, that falls under the highway budget.
Right, no, what I'm saying is, as an example, the reason we don't own snowplows is because when a snowplow breaks...
It's so expensive.
We don't pay for, the snowplow stops being charged. We don't pay for an oil change, we don't pay to fix a plow, we don't pay to put new tires on it. The contracted people who provide the snow plowing charge us a rate, which we then pay. We take the, the whole, as Lisa said, the maintenance of, whatever the tool is, the maintenance of the tool, the, you know, acquiring of the tool comes out of that expense. Whereas if all of a sudden we had to buy lawn mowers, we had to buy gas for the lawn mowers, we have, you know, one person, if they're out sick, we have to have a backup lawn mower person. When you contract out landscaping services, you, you take that, that headache away, essentially.
Yes, but you're also paying overhead and profit when you, when you go with those services.
Well, it, it's kind of a, you have to do an analysis, right? I'm not, I'm not...
We need a cost-benefit analysis.
Which I'm not so sure, I don't know.
And you look at the repair bills.
Until you see the data, you don't know, but I'm, my guess is that we're doing the right thing right now, the way we do it.
So basically, Jim, what I'm hearing is, if you were to take your own time to gather the data and present a cost-benefit analysis for the board to review?
Yeah.
And then we'll have something to actually determine whether or not it would be cost-effective to change how we do that.
Yeah. I mean, we, we do have to realize that in the first year, yes, with the equipment purchases, there would be...
Yeah, but you could do like a five-year...
Well, I was just going to say, I would prioritize it by over, probably a ten-year program.
I'm happy to let you take on that task.
Thank you.
I will add it to my list.
Okay, but in the meantime, we keep that contracted.
In the meantime, I will move that we add the draft general government building budget to our draft town budget.
I second the motion.
All right, any further discussion? By the way, even though it may be two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand, the proposed budget is actually down eight-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars.
And I congratulate the ladies for having sharp pencils downstairs.
So without any further comments, questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
So I think I'll be a nay, only because I, I, you know, it's tough, because I do agree, we need to keep it all together like this, but we need to manage it differently. So I'll just be a nay for the heck of it, but it doesn't create any issues going forward.
Okay, so it does pass, it's three to one. Matt, maybe you can gather some data to present to the board?
I don't think there's any data needed. The fact of the matter is...
Or a proposal as to how it would be managed?
I think I just gave, I think I just gave my proposal, so...
Not really, someone did watch.
As in, what body, where the man-hours will come from, or, you know, that sort of thing?
So here's, here's the thing, let me ask this question. Our, and I always forget the name of the company, but Dennis's company, who's our...
Civil construction.
Civil construction.
Mm-hmm.
So you said you had an issue with them recently?
Ah, the sink.
With the building?
Yeah, the sink, and I guess one of the pipes was leaking.
So what happened? How did you find out about that?
Tony told me. He went down to fix the sink and the stopper.
Yeah.
And came back and told me it'd probably be cheaper to just replace the faucet, but he found the leak up above and said we needed a plumber, so I contacted the plumber.
There's how we should run things. Once, once town hall, whether it's town administrator or the BOS secretary is notified, then we contact the correct service person. Now, absolutely, if it's a problem at the fire station, we don't expect you guys to drive to the fire station and wait there to meet a plumber. But I, I think, you know, it comes back to the landlord thing. When I was a landlord, I almost never, maybe once or twice, had to go to the building and meet the plumber. But I got the bill, and I talked to the plumber and said, I told my tenant, "Hey, plumber's coming. Ten o'clock, okay, great." Plumber goes there, did the job, bill came to me, is what it comes down to. It's, the proposal is simple as that, is we, if we're going to control their budget, we need to be the landlord. We need to be where the, everything comes through.
Okay, so we're saying, or you were saying, that you would like to inform all the department heads, or different building occupants, for example, fire, police, transfer station would be another location, library?
Yeah, we're responsible for the building.
Library. I think that pretty much covers it, right? Recreation would be Greenie Park or the town beach, so...
Yeah, a little different, but yeah, yeah.
So each of these department heads would be responsible for notifying the town administrator or the selectman secretary of a repair issue, and then the town administrator or secretary would then make the appropriate phone call, notify the department head who's coming, when, and the department head would be there when the repairs are being done.
Well, they would communicate with the department head. I'm not, we don't have to go to this much detail, but the, you know, it's, it's not telling the department head when to be there, it's basically saying, department head says, "I need a plumber." They say, "Okay, let me get you a plumber, call the plumber." Department head says, "I can be there at this time, whatever." They meet.
So we do that now. What I have an issue with is if it's the garage door, they have, or the alarm system, they have their own people that they use. I don't know who to call. I don't know who...
They can tell you who they're calling, and you can add that to the, basically, we should have a list. You know, the list should be, if there's a problem with the garage doors, this is who we call. If we need a plumber, this is who we call, this is the backup, this is the backup. And the list should be maintained in town hall, and they need to feed you this information.
Isn't that like an order of operations? Do you want to create, you vote on a new one, and then this list?
I wouldn't.
That's what it is, it's like, here's what happens when you need a repair, and all the department heads know ways they can do it?
All I'm saying is, we have a central budget, we need a central, you know, way to manage that budget.
Right, but that would be, that would be the document, it's called an order of operations, so people can check out what to do. I don't know, do we, I don't feel ready to vote on that yet.
And all the bills currently for any repairs or maintenance to any of the buildings, they already come through for you to sign off on, right?
Once the work is done, but usually the department heads have their own person, and they call and talk to me, you know, "We've got this issue, can we pay for it out of general government?" You know, I mean, they, they could ask for more than what we could afford to pay. I mean, I'm going to say, we don't really have that amount of money, you know? Like you say all the time, priorities here. A forty-thousand-dollar budget isn't going to cover a lot.
But that, that's part of the prioritization, right? Because if they were to call you, and a toilet's different, but, you know...
Yeah, yeah.
If they were calling you something, you could tell them right there, and then, "Sorry, I'll talk to you in January," or whatever, you know, we don't have the money right now.
Right, and that's what we do.
Or tell me again in December, and for inclusion in the next budget.
That's why we would always ask for a price, just so we have an idea what, what we're looking at.
All I'm saying is, centralized budget, you need centralized communication and record-keeping, for that matter, you know? So, so we know who, you know, who, who wants the work done, who approved the work, who did the work, you know, that sort of thing. It doesn't have to be solved tonight.
All right. That can be done, though.
Sounds like we already have a lot of that in place.
Yeah.
Now, whether it's being utilized...
So that's what, that's what I thought, but last, two weeks ago...
Exactly, that was a surprise.
I was called that, exactly, so...
And I agree, that was a surprise.
Yeah.
So maybe we just need to send out a reminder to department heads what the process is, so that it gets followed.
Yep.
And that's why I'm asking, if they have things that we need to know about, tell me now, before we've complete the budget.
But I do want to see a reminder notice go out to all department heads when it comes to any maintenance or repairs, unexpected or, you know, anticipated, to be funneled through the town administrator's office.
Okay.
And then what do I do at that point? Do I contact the chair and say, "This is what they want to do"?
Well, we, we already have policies around expenses, right? Right now, you'd be probably talking to the chair, depending on the dollar amount. Throughout the year, I think it's different, right? We don't, we don't approve every little expenditure, we do up to a certain amount.
Right. Yeah, so you know what's in the budget, you know what's going to come out of the budget, so, yes, you would, just like you would, just like any other department head would approve any other expense under any other line item? You would be the approver of the general government expenditure line items, right?
Here, exactly. Here's what it comes down to, is, in, you know, all transparency, I don't want the fire chief, we hired the fire chief to manage the fire department. I don't want the fire chief standing up at that podium again and asking, "He's been trying to find a plumber, can somebody please help me find a plumber?"
He didn't call me about a plumber, because I would have given him one.
Exactly, well, I'm just stating what was said. I don't know the background, I don't know who was called, but whether, whoever that message needs to go out to, I, as a member of this board, I don't ever want to hear that again at a selectman's meeting, that somebody's trying to find a plumber and they can't find a plumber.
If you send all the departments a reminder of the order of operations when a repair is made, they will know what to do. We can remind them.
Or when a repair is needed.
Exactly. Yeah, that's what I meant to say.
Right.
Yep, so that's what, that's what we'll do.[1772.31] Yep, so that's what, that's what we'll do.
Yep.
'Cause it sounds like it should be in place, maybe not everybody knows it, so let's remind them what it is.
Sounds like it, yep.
Okay, so that's the end of general government buildings assessing.
So, with the statistical update coming up next year, the assessor's contract gets reduced, and it is in the folder for the board to approve for next year. The data collection or data verification will go with the statistical update, so her budget has been reduced by that $15,000.
Move to include the draft assessing budget in the town's proposed 2020 draft budget.
Second?
All right, so a question, since we do have the statistical upgrade that's due, how, is that going into the budget somewhere else, or...
Well, it will be once you choose which vendor you wanna use.
Okay, and would it go under the assessing budget?
No, no, there's a line item in the operating budget, DRA's form, that's statistical update or revaluation, I guess they call it.
So, it's not in one of these budget items? Okay, that's...
Goes in the, the state report, there's a place in there, like you'll put your fire and your executive and all the budget line items, there's one for reval or statistical update.
All right, so, one last question. The, we have a, not in our binders at the moment, but we have a grand total operating budget.
Yes, yes.
Is that statistical cost going to be in that proposed operational budget? The one that gets presented on the town warrant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
That I wanted to make sure of. All right, anybody else have any questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, our next item, we are...
Want to go back to A?
We are going back to A, which is moving forward with variance request? And how are we moving forward with that?
Well, if you, if you email that Chief El Canino sent his folks with the Fire Marshal, State Fire Marshal, and the State Fire Marshal said that you need to put an application in, and that you should work with a engineer, a fire design engineer, so I'm pretty, I think at this point, you just probably need to make some kind of motion to have Jim, not to Jeff Murphy move forward with this, and Jeff, he would be the one that could help us with that, 'cause the application has to be filled out by somebody who knows prior to them.
And I'm guessing that there's going to be a cost associated with that.
Jeff is doing it, yes, but if you get the variance, you'll end up saving.
Yeah, I think, I don't know if I could make the motion this way. I would like to get sort of a statement of work, or whatever you wanna call it, from whatever engineering S...
Carter, you have a Carter?
No.
I was just...
See, see, I don't think it'd be Carter, maybe I'm wrong, but...
Jeff Murphy is the one.
Jeff's company, which is whatever engineering.
SCC.
SCC, sort of a SCC statement of work, this is the amount of time's gonna be involved, because I agree with what Diane said, I would think, the amount of money we'd invest in them completing the application would be small dollars in comparison with actually having to do the full project, but I think we just need dollars in front of us. No, you know, no disrespect to them, but, you know, engineers are expensive and they do cost a lot of money, but I think if he could get back to us pretty quick with some sort of a number associated with completion of this request, I'd feel better having that before I made any motion to do so. I think we wanna do it, but...
Right, and to me, cost is going to be part of the decision-making, only because, yes, we could have the engineer and the chair work together to write the application for the variance, but there's no guarantee that we'll get it.
Right.
Which means we could spend this money to have this drafted, submit it, be denied, and still have to invest in the sprinkler system, which means it's an additional cost.
Really, there's two projects, right? Because I don't wanna lose any traction on the, the thing with Carter.
Oh, neither do I, right.
However, and I agree with Selectman Gonyer, it's one of those things, if it's $1,500 to draft the information for the State Fire Marshal, if it's $10,000...
We gotta start talking.
Yeah, the...
Exactly.
So, I mean, can I do it this way? I would move to...
Do we even need a motion? I'll just ask him for a statement of work.
Well, no, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to cut some time here, and really, what I wanna see is ask him to move forward with the statement of work and put a number near it. If, if it's less than five grand, I don't have a problem with Lisa signing as the chair and it just getting done.
That number's way too high.
So, give me another number.
$1,500.
Okay.
No, I have a question.
I think that's...
All right, hold on, so, we have a motion.
Yeah, I, I would move 2,000, so I would move to approve completion of the variance request with SFC Engineering, not to exceed $2,000.
Okay, that I can second.
All right, so we have a second fight, Jim. Now, question?
Yeah, so, let me make sure I understand this. So, he spoke to the marshal, who says he's willing to help the town, but we need to get this thing written. Does that mean that should he help the town and the variance is accepted, we are no longer spending a quarter million dollars on a sprinkler system?
Correct.
Correct.
So...
Could.
Well, I mean, so, in what condition do we find, I mean, this letter makes it seem as if he's almost leaning, there's no guarantees, but he's open to doing this, right? If the variance is correct, how do we determine that we even could get this variance, other than the app, I mean...
The only way to determine if you're going to get it is to apply for it.
Right.
That's the only way.
Well, there must be a list of conditions that need to be met to get a variance, no?
Yes.
Okay.
It's unique to each situation.
Okay, so, but he is open, so for me, I would say, saving a quarter million dollars would be really great, as long as we don't waste too much.
Exactly.
But, you know, I'm willing to waste $5,000 if it actually worked, I wouldn't even waste it to save $250,000. I don't know how to do it, but I would not be comfortable going too, too low if that is a normal cost to put in a variance, I don't know what a normal cost is.
I don't have a problem with the variance, if it gives us the ability to possibly extend... One of, one of the big cost-saving things that would happen on Merrimack Road would be if three-phase power were to go down that road, and we, we have been informed by Unitil that that is an eventuality. So, I, I could live with the variance. I have a problem trying to live with the variance if it's gonna cost us $10,000 for something, I'm not a gambler, $10,000 for something that may or may not happen. The town, as a selectman, I can't spend that kind of money.
Just as the new person, what happened before when a variance was the reason it wasn't done, and then we didn't get it? Why did that not occur?
So, so I...
We were reject, was that variance rejected at that point?
It was never applied for.
It was never applied for.
Whoa, and then how, what determination was made then, that, that a variance would be applicable and work?
So, without getting into non-public here...
Yep.
It's not public?
I would, what?
Oh, I thought that was public information.
There is, he's just going to go...
We're teetering, we're teetering on non-public information. You know, this is just for the general community and Kate to know, since she wasn't here.
I wasn't here for the fire station issue, just so everyone knows.
Right, so, so we, we were, we were informed that a variance would not be possible.
By whom?
That's why...
That's private? Okay.
We were informed a variance would not be possible, so we did not go down the route of a variance. We are now being given information that a variance might be possible.
By the State Fire Marshal.
As in, so, as in, any variance you would apply for, you have to apply for it, meet, meet the conditions, get, you know, a decision-maker tells you if you get the variance, variance might have additional conditions. You might get a variance for a short amount of time. So, I, I guess, you know, in summary, let's move forward with this. I put a budget on it just so we don't waste any time, but at the same time, I don't wanna lose any momentum on the planning, you know, stage, in case we have to do this, 'cause Jim makes a good point, it might be, we'll give you a variance for five years, but, you know, pay me now or pay me later, we might, we might have to just do it anyway in five years, do we wanna take care of it one year?
Let me charge you, so variance doesn't mean you do not have to install a sprinkler system, it just means you can wait, or it could be either or?
Might, we don't know.
We don't know, okay.
We don't know until we have this application in front of us.
Are there several people who write these applications, so we could look for the lowest cost to write it, is there, is that possible?
Could, I don't think we should, we have, we, SFC Engineering, from what I've been told by several people, is for the state of New Hampshire is like a go-to.
Okay, great.
For this type of work.
Do we need a time limit with an agreement, so it can be encumbered if we need to encumber that money?
Agreement with whom, the engineer?
Yeah, whoever.
They're already kinda on the payroll, right? But it's worth asking the question, I think, that if, if this is gonna take you till January, we need to, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it would come out of the bond.
It should, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, that's, that's not an encumbrance, yeah. Unless we wanna use...
If we have a couple of thousand dollars that, that is left in one of our budgets that we can encumber, I'd rather...
Yeah, but if we don't have a, a contract to encumber it, we can't.
Okay.
So, that's my concern, I just wanna make sure.
Can we just get an estimate and then vote on this?
Well, this is what I'm saying, is we could, but I don't wanna waste any time, so...
Oh, okay, so you're wanting...
If we can walk out of here with a budget of two, is that what my long-ago motion was, 2,000?
Yes.
It was originally 2,000.
Then, then we can just get it done, but if it's more than 2,000, then two weeks from now, we're back in here, we're talking about it.
All right, so, we do have a motion, we have a second, are we done with discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I might, I'm not prepared, I need to know.
Abstained?
I'm going to abstain until I find out how much variance is cost.
All right, so we have...
That's what we're gonna find out.
Exactly.
Right, but there, so, okay, let me just, again, you're saying 2,000, that means if it's 2,000 or below, it's going forward. If it is...
Just to get the application in.
Right, I get it, if the variance, if we find out it's 2,500, it just comes back to the board and we vote on it again?
So, the, we, we look at it, because if it's $2,000, he's filling out the application.
It's clear, got it.
So, we get the application done, so we're signing it, so it's moving forward.
Right.
If it's more than that, if it's 2,500 bucks, we're back here in two weeks to decide if we wanna pay.
Fine, okay, then I will, I will approve.
If it's $2,000 and one cent...
We're back here.
We are back here.
Okay, so then I will...
Gosh, I hope not.
Vote aye.
If you can tell them to cut that one cent out, I'd really appreciate it.
Okay, so it's a unanimous vote?
It is a unanimous vote.
I'll give you the penny.
Oh, I just had to throw that out there. Okay, our next item is, let's see, review quotes for printing town reports.
We only got two quotes, Kaiser and...
Right, and if I understand correctly, the company that did them last year did not submit a quote this year.
Wow, they did not.
Well, we kept asking them to reduce their quote.
This is a huge spread between the two, is it $6 now?
There's approximately an $8 difference between the two.
How do we decide?
We don't have any samples, right?
Either of them have we used before.
I don't remember either one of them.
They don't sound familiar.
Well, what about the two cents per page versus three? Well, it looks like Keystone, it's two cents a page versus three.
Which one's closest, and do they pick up and deliver, the main thing?
Well, the delivery on Keystone is less, it seems, I maybe don't understand this, the price per page is less.
So, is out of Texas, New Hampshire?
And where's Keystone?
Casey, Casey, Hudson.
Hudson.
Okay, and what is our usual number of pages for the town report?
I think we did 150, 'cause we never knew.
Are we right at 150 pages?
I wanna say maybe 147.
Okay, I, I'm asking because there is a price per page over 150 pages, and there is a, well, two cents per page, three cents per page, that's not a lot.
Does this add up? Wait a minute, so it's $9 per 300, three cents a page, so that should be, the bottom one should be higher.
The ones in...
141, Lisa, 141.
Okay.
Shouldn't this be higher?
Which one?
300, okay, Case should be higher.
Like I said, there's a probably $8 difference between...
Keystone, but it's lower here, is something not adding?
It's only, it would only be higher if it was over 150 pages.
Well, they're saying 300, okay, it's $600 for 300.
So, if you look at the total, so let's say it's 300 pages, then it would be, Case would be $7 higher? Eight, $8.
$8.
$8 higher, and that's because of the difference in price per 300 over.
I know, the big difference is the price and delivery.
Keystone's cheaper.
One's $125 to delivery, the other's 50.
50 would be better.
Yes, but the total...
The totals don't make sense, $6...
The total is only a difference of $8.
Right.
I'm assuming that the delivery charge is included in this spreadsheet.
Correct.
So, even with the...
We'll go for the total.
So, even though Case may have a higher delivery fee, their total quote is less...
Yeah, $67 less.
Than Keystone, that's my point.
But how can it be, one is $6 per 300, and one is $9 per 300? $6 per 300 is less than $9 per 300, which is how they're arriving at this 300 number, yet that, it isn't reflected, one is, the math doesn't seem to work, that's what I don't understand.
So, I would be open to letting Nancy decide, since it's really, like you just said, there are certain things that you value over others, right? Shipping and all that stuff.
Okay, we make, just pick one, the board's gotta vote anyway, 'cause it's a cost, so... We need to know now?
Doesn't matter to me either way.
I just don't understand how we got a 1410 for Case.
Yeah, I would, I would not mention the vendor name in public.
You take the 1410 and you add 125, that's we get the price.
Right.
You take the 1477, add the $50, and that's we get that 1577.
Right, but if the price per 300 is actually less with the top one, then that number should be less.
One second, if, that's for 150 pages, okay? If you go over to 151 pages for, for 300, so you have one book that's 150, your book is 151 pages.
Right.
For a stack of 300 of those books.
Okay.
All right, you're gonna be, add an extra $6 for an extra $9.
Oh, that's where, okay, it's not per page.
So, if you have two pages extra, so you're at 152, you're gonna add $12 for a stack of 300, and then $18 for a stack of 300.
Which do you prefer? Which do you two prefer? I would matter on this at this point.
I'll make a motion that we award the printing of the town report to Keystone Press at 300 copies for $1,527.17.
Are you girl, are you okay with that, you guys? You use them?
Which one was that?
I don't know, we're the company.
He would be your cheapest one, because if you figure it out, if you go over 150 pages, it's gonna cost you less to use him, by standard.
The delivery's cheaper, okay, I will second your motion.
All right, no, Matt already did the second.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
Okay, so, you're going with Key, you're recommending Keystone?
Yes.
Don't mention the other's name.
Is that one Exeter or Hudson?
Actually, we...
Hudson?
I'm required to, you, you need to talk with information.
No, it's 91A, we, it's reputation.
There's disagreement there.
Just on those emails.
So, I, we only did 141 pages last year, so the likelihood of adding nine pages to the town report this year, very, very slow. So, I, I'm not sure why we would go with the higher one, even though it's not a lot would go with the higher one, even though it's not a lot higher, it's still higher.
Because you have to, the delivery charge is higher, too.
Yeah.
The delivery charge may be higher, but the price per book is lower.
Oh, yeah, that's, I see.
It's the total. Delivery charge is part of the cost of doing business, therefore...
Right, which is the fourteen-seventy-seven versus...
Fourteen-ten?
No.
Or, no, fourteen-seventy-seven plus delivery.
Right, the delivery.
So the spreadsheet does not include the delivery charge.
In the far right-hand column.
It says total.
That total is also the price per page over one fifty?
Fourteen-seventy-seven, seventeen plus fifty.
Column G is the, is the price of C and F.
C and F.
Only, 'cause I can't tell you if you're gonna go over.
Got it, okay.
That's why I chose the lower of the two.
Got it, okay. I wasn't quite understanding the spreadsheet layout. I was thinking that fifty and the one-twenty-five was a total of the six dollars for whatever, you know, the two cents per page, or, so that's what I missed. I missed that those were the delivery charges there. All right, any other questions, comments, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we go with Keystone. Our next item is, where are we?
Assessing contract.
Yep. Review the 2020 assessing contract. So our town assessor is contracted, not elected or appointed, or an employee, and her contract is due. There is no change from last year.
Move to sign the...
Wait a minute.
Assessor contract with Andrea Louie.
And just to add all of the information, the budget proposed for 2020 does include the amount for this contract.
On the last page, it's checked, so you could just say as proposed, as presented?
Yep.
'Cause we checked off that amount.
I see that.
Yeah.
All right, so you did say as proposed, Jim?
As proposed, yes.
All right, do we have a second for that?
In the amount of?
Thirty thousand dollars.
Just wanna make sure, that's what I'm seeing.
All right, any other, Matt, did you second?
Yep.
Okay, Matt seconded. Any other questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. All right, our next item is the bids for the 2020 statistical reevaluation.
Have you got that spreadsheet that Nancy did?
Yes. Which was a very interesting spreadsheet.
Of course, that's so confusing.
Everything that was in our RFP.
So wait, this is the same woman as we just agreed to before, right? One of these people.
Well, this, three bids. Self-employed.
Okay.
So, we...
Qualified to do the work.
Probably don't wanna mention names.
So we have three bids. We can just say B, C, and D for the columns, how's that?
Yep.
C is the lowest, extremely lower.
Which one is this? Which file?
It's statistical revaluation bids.
Me, too.
You're welcome. No, the one that's a lot less, I think it's important for us to pay attention to the bottom rows, which are forty-two and forty-five. Notes, contractor will work with town. However, the next note does not include for the contractor to complete any general assessing functions such as building permit pickups, exemptions, credits, timber tax, current use applications, land use tax change, completion of the MS-1, equalization reports, or final tax one. So that may be why it's significantly lower.
So I have a question, and again, not mentioning any names or identification of anyone, I noticed that, what are we doing, B, C, and D?
Correct. B, C, and D.
So I noticed B has a new bid. How did that come about?
Good question.
'Cause, 'cause these were sealed bids, correct?
At the last non-public...
Yep.
I asked the board to make a determination if you wanted them to all come in or whatever, and I believe one of the selectmen said that he'd like to see the chair negotiate. So I was asked to just ask if that person would be willing to go lower.
So that's, that's fine. If what you're telling me it was negotiation, then I'm cool with that. I was wanting to make sure it wasn't somebody with information.
No information was given.
Right.
Right. As authorized.
Yep.
It was also negotiation without revealing any other bid amounts.
I'm sure, yeah. I'm sure. I would move to...
There's a penalty going over August.
I would move to sign an agreement with, and Diane can insert later, the vendor...
Vendor B?
Identified in, in column B for the 2020 statistical reevaluation.
Second.
Yes.
Okay, so you signed a contract with them?
To sign. Is it the chair, I would assume? So you can add that to my... No, we're all on there.
Well, we're all on, well, that's the other one.
The other one, yeah.
I don't have the statistical contracts, but we might be all on that one.
So why don't, can you, this will be clumsily reworded, but for us to sign whether it's the full board or the chair as appropriate, the contract with vendor B for the 2020 statistical reevaluation. I could, but I don't want to.
Okay. I'll second that.
All right, any further questions, comments, concerns?
I have a question.
Okay.
When this is done, often there are people who make appeals or wanna talk about what has occurred. Is that included in the price of this bid that they will deal with them?
Our town assessor will deal with, and yes, in the spreadsheet, it is actually in there.
Which one is it? I couldn't figure out which one it is. I saw utility appeals, which is different. What do you call that?
Informal review meeting of preliminary assessment and informal hearings, abatements with written responses.
Where's the other one?
So we're looking at twenty, row twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay. Okay, and that's the best price in court, too. Okay.
So it's, disputes are also included in their quotes.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
All right, any other questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
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 That's unanimous. All right, our next item. Our 2020 meeting schedule.
Yay.
We're coming into 2020 already. Now, let's see, there we go. Do we fall on any holidays this year, in 2020?
You didn't do anything other than second in, uh, first and third, right?
Yeah, well, I did add, in October, I added tweaks for budget meetings.
Yeah.
So that way they remember that one.
Where are we now?
So it's already in there this time?
Okay.
The holidays, all the vacation times, are you happy with those?
Okay, public hearings, and then that one, deliberative session.
Some we don't do, but we could.
Move to adopt.
This looks good. Wait, once on my birthday, I won't be there, never mind.
Oh, yes, and Kate, so if you notice, Tuesday, March tenth, election day. We need a quorum of selectmen there from eight AM to past eight PM, by the way.
Technically a meeting.
Yes, it is a meeting, so we need a quorum there. And we do work, a couple of us are there from start to finish, a couple swap off, you know, they're, they're, one is there for morning, and another one is there for the evening with an overlap between the two. So as much time as you can make, but keep that in mind for when we come closer to that, because that's when we'll actually say when we'll be available. We're not saying today when we're gonna be available, or who's available when, but I just wanted you to know, being our new selectmen.
We are on, there is a meeting on St. Patrick's Day, so that is a holiday.
And my birthday, that's a holiday.
One thing that's missing is the February eleventh.
Yeah, I mean, that's technically a meeting as well, but it was just announced.
Primary.
Yeah, presidential primary.
That's right, the presidential primary. We need a quorum here.
No, you don't. You need a quorum with your town.
Interesting.
I asked Mary Jo.
So I'm sure Mary Jo knows better than I, but I swear, I was at a training when I first became a selectman, and they said, but like I said, she would know better, but I swear at the training, they said, anytime we have polls open, we have to have a quorum of selectmen.
I'll ask her again, but I'm pretty sure that's what she said.
'Cause the, the, what do you call it, the inspectors?
Yeah, I'll double-check my election manual, too.
Yeah, the inspectors only seem, they never come for town meeting, but they always come for the statewide.
Well, that was, the other one was September...
I should know.
I believe it's seventh is the state primary.
State primary, yeah.
Does the board have to be there for...
It would be the first Tuesday in September.
Do we need a quorum?
Second Tuesday in September.
Or second, sorry.
Since the first Tuesday is September first.
If it is, then I'll just add those in for you.
Yeah, I mean, we, we always do it, you know. We always seem to make it work. The other thing, too, is it's worth noting, as Bob Dismelik has told us, you can do a selectman pro tem, but we all have to vote on it. So if, if we, if we found that only two of us could make it, we could turn around and we could say, I say this 'cause I'm sure he's watching intently, Bill Landry is selectman pro tem for the day, and we all vote for that, and then, then we're covered with a quorum, and hopefully Bill won't do anything to mess with the town for that eight hours that he's...
You can restrict it.
Yeah.
However, Madam Chair, I would move the adoption of the 2020 selectmen's meeting schedule.
Second.
Seconded.
Knowing that all things are subject to flux.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Unanimous. All right, our next item, request to carryover PTO. We do have a request from a town employee to carry over their PTO.
Madam Chair, Chairman, I would allow the request...
There we go.
As stated.
All right, and if I am correct, we don't allow for, do we have short-term disability or anything like that?
We do.
We do? Okay.
Yep.
So, but it, just a thought that popped into my head.
And we can't pick a specific number, because she may use some before the end of the year, so...
But we can say not to exceed.
Well, we know, we'll know, you know, 'cause she keeps a register of everybody's time, so we can specify that later if you need to, or...
I still think we should, since we do have a number of hours at this point...
Okay.
That the motion should include not to exceed.
That's why I said, to approve the request as, as...
Made.
I was just gonna say, but it's not printed, we don't have a paper sheet, as it appears for thirty-four point seven five hours, max.
There you go. All right. And do I have a second on that?
Yes.
All right, Matt's our second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our next item, other business?
Just one thing, Madam Chairman. Not to belabor the little accident earlier, but I just watched a selectman juggle, luckily, a closed bottle of water.
I always check.
Can I make a suggestion that we no longer have beverages at the...
No.
I second that, no. I always check. I have kids at home, so I always make sure there's...
I'm the only person, I, I do...
It took me five years to spill a cup of coffee.
Okay.
It'll take me another five years before I do the next one.
Okay.
Can I just let...
Say, there's no use crying over spilled coffee.
Can I just let you know, Mary Jo replied, she believes so, that you all have to, you have to have your quorum, but she said recently the laws may have changed.
Yeah, that could be it.
I think it pertained to multiple polling places within the town, but she'll check tomorrow and let you know.
All right, or Bob Dismelik may be another good source for that as well.
This is like...
As the moderator, he should know.
Yeah, but just so everybody knows, we don't take live calls on the air. So Mary Jo texted and we answered her.
I texted her.
Oh, you texted her? So I don't wanna get into the habit of everybody calling and texting us during a live meeting to give answers, that'll just extend the...
We'll take questions on your phone.
Only for babies. Just from my wife.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Only for newborns.
Call you Howard Strange.
That's survival.
And under announcements, just bragging right here, I have a certificate here, woo-hoo! See this? For grant writing workshop attending.
Nice.
I spent two days learning how to write grants.
So exciting.
Excellent.
Nice, go, go write a real one now, before you forget everything.
Well, one of the things that I found out is you don't go looking for grants that you can apply for. What you do is you identify your needs and then look for the grants to pay for the needs. So in order for me to utilize my newfound skills, I would need suggestions, recommendations, thoughts from board members, department heads, town residents, whoever.
You've got lots.
What are the needs of the towns that our budgets don't cover? And then, if I have a list of things like that, I can look and see if there are any grants that might help us to make it happen.
Always welcome.
And then...
That's great.
Attempt my first grant. So throwing it out there for the public, you know?
Thank you.
Next item?
Madam Chairman, I move to adopt, to approve the public and non-public minutes dated November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Seconded by Matt. Any errors, omissions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I add one thing that I'm hoping is gonna be non-controversial?
Oh, no.
To the minute?
No, 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 to another subject.
Oh, no.
Oh, absolutely.
This is housekeeping. So what I'd like to propose is an experiment, we can do it for as long as we wanna experiment with it, I would like to see us put estimated time limits next to each agenda item for each agenda, and then designate somebody the timekeeper. So for instance, if somebody gets up there, and whether it's the chair and Diane together, they're gonna have to use their best judgment as far as what the time limit is. I don't think we can automatically say anything, but let's say somebody's presenting their budget, and they have ten minutes, and it hits eleven minutes, then the board can basically, somebody puts their hand up, the official timekeeper, and says, just so you know, we're over time, the board can decide whether to grant the time and keep going, or to say, let's wrap it up and do it. I, I say, let's experiment with this because we, I think we owe it to ourselves and also people who are waiting for our meetings and all that stuff. If we could have time limits for this, and especially non-public, then that might help us stay on time and, and make better use of all this time.
I'd like that idea.
I do, too. We can, I mean, it'll be a work in progress, obviously, but for non-public and even for public, we can try to anticipate. If it's somebody speaking to an item, we can ask them approximately how long it will take them, et cetera, and then go with that.
Do you want that on the agenda?
Yes, the...
For all to see.
For everyone to see. We are looking to spend, say, ten minutes on the sprinkler system update.
Maximum.
Right? For each proposed budget, you know, ten minutes or fifteen, whatever the case may be.
Let's say on the bottom, that unscheduled is fifteen minutes. We could change that and just put it on there for ten, all matters. And that way it gives everybody a heads up. We can send out an email to all... We can send out an email to all the department heads and let them know.
Keep them concise, if you can.
Right, but there are going to be some things that are likely going to take over 10 minutes.
Well, that's up to you, but I mean, you know, you can, you know.
What I would do, just spitballing here, is if I were you, Diane, when I send out the agenda, before I send out the final one, I'd send it to Lisa with your estimates on times. Lisa, as the chair, can look at it and say, no, I'd increase, I'd decrease, whatever, bang, final agenda post, and
I'm good with that.
And we're gonna
I can bring an hourglass that we can just
Excuse me, Madam? Does it say solution looking for a problem?
No, I don't think so.
No, no, this is a problem looking for a solution, which is long-running meetings.
I just think the department heads need to know, they only have a certain period of time, and that's it.
Right.
It's okay to run it efficient, right?
They need to stick to the facts and get their thing out.
And especially with
And not just department heads, but
Us.
Us. Well, we
It's everybody.
We need to be reined in sometimes, too.
And, and you know, you know, God bless the general public that comes in here and steps up and speaks to us, but sometimes they're a big culprit, too. They're never here, so they don't know how things work, so they come in and they spend 30 minutes on something, and our agendas, you know.
Your two minutes are up.
Exactly, and none of us should be afraid of that, like that.
Your two minutes are up again.
If you do, I'm going to keep going. I'm like the, on the Oscars, you have to start playing music.
Get the gavel.
All right, so we will experiment.
I'll be voting against it, because in the six years I've been on this board, that may have happened once or twice.
Oh, no, no, no. Come on, Jim.
No, no, that hasn't, that
No, ain't
One could say
We're not just saying public. We're including non-public in this, too.
Non-public's the biggest culprit.
And how many times have we
I was just going to say, non-public's more of a culprit. However, if there's a, if there's a concerned citizen standing at that podium, and somebody has decided they have five minutes, they've gone through the process of getting on an agenda, standing there, they deserve as however much time
Well, this is why, one of the things I said just a few minutes ago, was that when they request to be put on the agenda, we get an estimate from them as to how much time they need.
Yeah.
And we can grant more.
So if it's a concerned citizen who wants to speak, and they think it's going to take them 20 minutes, then we'll give them 20 minutes. And if it, if because the board has asked many questions, extended that time, the board can extend that amount of time. Right now, it's just kind of a guideline to say, okay, look, we've, you know, we've allocated 20 minutes, you know? If we're at a part where we haven't gotten all of the information, the board can say, let's give them another five minutes on this.
Yeah, let's put a time limit on this discussion.
Well, I'm taking another two minutes, because I agree with you, Jim. If it's somebody who's, comes up here once in 30 years of living in town. We don't want to give them five minutes and say, you're done. But we need, we need to be economical in terms of everyone's time, because, because I've, several times, I've noted that residents have gotten up here, and like I said, they don't know what's on after them. And they've gone up here, and all of a sudden, I've looked at the clock and said, wow, we just spent 40 minutes on a subject, which if people were more aware of the time, we might be able to get it done in 20 minutes, and it's everybody in the room.
We can also look at the schedule ahead of time and say, hey, this is too long,
Exactly.
And I'll take things off so we can manage it adequately.
See you next time.
Exactly.
Yeah, because I know a lot of times, we have somebody at the podium, they come in for a specific thing, and they're, they're wandering everywhere but the specific thing.
And we won't shut
That's what takes a lot of time.
And just so they know, we will be able to vote to grant more time if it's an urgent matter or something has to be understood.
So it's kind of a, let's first
Test.
Put some time on there, see how we do
Yeah.
With estimating the amount of time that it takes. I'm not saying let's just, you know, cut people off or say, oh, time's up, you're out of here. I'm saying, let's try to predict how much time, see how we do with it as far as our predictions, okay? And then as we progress, let's try to hold people, including ourselves, to our time limits, because as we guesstimate, we'll get better
Right.
At guesstimating, and then at some point, we can say, you know, that in order for us not to be leaving at 10 and 11 o'clock at night, we need to put time limits on things.
What about the, the person that comes in and they're not on the agenda? We That, yeah, but non-public, a lot of times, there's many things that get brought up that we didn't even have on the agenda.
Well, that, that's it, you know, because
Unless it's an emergency.
Yeah, and that's, that's part of what we're going to do, is we are going to also inform these people that unless it's a mission-critical topic, then it needs to be saved for the next
Right.
Meeting
Right.
Where it can be planned for within the timeframe.
Really, what it comes down to is 7 o'clock, we should be striving to get up here at 7 o'clock.
Yes, yes.
If you calculate what everybody wants to talk about, and it's all mission-critical, and it comes to 7:30 on your agenda, then people should know, hey, don't rush over here, 7:30 is when you're going to see us up here. Everybody's time.
Just for your benefit, I do ask them for, especially for non-public.
Yeah.
And I tell them what time they should be in, based on what they tell me, so
It's really accountability. Right now, you've got all this information, but we're not, we don't have it in front of us to say, hey, whoa, department head.
Because a lot of times, they're sitting down there waiting to get in, and we're taking longer with the
Exactly, exactly.
Let's see, yeah.
Yep, all right, so
I like it, Matt, that's a good idea.
Every now and then, I get a good idea.
My timer, you're perfect. We ended exactly the timer.
Let's try it. I mean, it's one of those things, you try it, see if it works, you know? Doesn't hurt to try.
Right.
All right, our next item, approval of minutes. We did that
Did that manifest?
For, anyone review non-public sessions? Any need unsealing? Nope. Okay, then we have one, two, and three.
I will move to sign payroll manifest for the pay period, November 10th through 23rd, 2019, with a pay date of November 27th, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I'll pay to sign the tax abatement for map 8-2-12-11 in the amount of $3.66.
No, $31.66. The one got missed.
$31.66 for the tax year 2019.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I move to sign the appointment as an alternate to the Recreation Commission for Amanda
Aiello
To a three-year term, which expires on December 31st, 2020.
That's not ready yet. The three-year term, wouldn't that be 2020?
Oh, yeah, look at that.
2022.
2022.
Sorry about that.
I still second.
All right, so seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I will abstain, only because she is my niece.
Oh, okay. Congratulations, Amanda.
On her being our niece.
Can I just say, too, that the vendor manifest is not ready tonight due to personal issues today.
Are these, there are two, three of them?
So if, if it gets
Which is why we didn't assign one, but we'll take a vote on it at our next meeting.
Well, I think I need signatures, because the checks cannot go out without at least three people approving it.
Right, but we, we've done this before on our off weeks.
Not on checks, not only on payroll, not on checks, because the treasurer wants signatures in order to assign the checks, and Kim will not mail them out unless she's got signatures from the board. Right? Isn't that what we've done?
Yeah, they've done it before, though. They've come in and signed the vendor manifest.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm saying, is if a vendor manifest or
When it's ready to let you know.
You know, comes up on an off week.
Okay.
We come in on our schedule, sign it, and then if a quorum signs, they can go out.
I just remembered the treasurer not wanting to sign checks unless she had the signatures.
Right, and she'll have her signature.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Sorry.
With nothing else?
Are we doing non-public?
We are. I think we have time, and it is
Get the stopwatch ready.
I will move to adjourn the public session of the selectmen's meeting.
Don't think you can.
I don't think we can adjourn.
Well
We're just moving, yeah, we're moving to go into non-public.
Make a motion.
But for the audience, the public portion is done after non-public. We will be immediately moving to adjourn, so there will be no more recording after this.
So can we have a motion to go into non-public?
I'll go into non-public under 91-8, colon, 3, Roman numeral 2, subsection A.
B. Please go under B first.
B, hiring public employees.
Second.
Seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.